Steve, are we ready to go? Okay. Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the roll to order. Call the meeting to order. Steve, will you please call the roll?
Sure. Councilwoman Miles?
Present.
Councilwoman Jones?
Here.
Councilman Wu?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Rosini?
Here.
Mayor Pitts?
Here.
All present.
Thank you, sir. Today, I'll ask the Mayor Pro Tem if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
That's my honor, please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's turn this on. The Villa Park City Council and staff welcome you to this meeting and we encourage your participation. If you wish to address the city council, please complete and submit a speaker card to the city clerk before the scheduled meeting time. Speaker cards can be found outside the entrance to the city council chambers. Speakers will be called in individually during the public comment section of each item they wish to speak on. Speakers will be limited to a time period of five minutes. Speakers are also able to submit comments in writing by 3:00 PM today. These comments will be read aloud during the public comment section of the item. So, again, this is probably the fun part of the meeting and probably the most rewarding for me, I think. You know, I never, it never ceases to amaze me that we have so many wonderful people that live in Villa Park that have contributed so much to this community. And tonight, as part of the recognition of the Villa Park Distinguished Citizen, I want to talk about somebody who, over the course of the past 21 years, if you've been one of those individuals that's attended one of the many events here in the city, you can thank our next recipient for the Distinguished Citizen. He is one of the founding five that started and developed our Community Services Foundation. It's well-known that our city does not have Parks and Recreation Department, and since 2002, the Community Services Foundation has been instrumental in helping all of us enjoy our city even more with parades, picnics, and other events that we've all come to cherish over time. So I would like to invite Bob Hunter to the podium so that we can honor his service to the community. Bob, will you please come to the podium and join us? You know, I really enjoyed so much learning about you, Bob. I've known you since I've been in Villa Park for over 20 years now, and, but there were so many things that I didn't know about you, and my time spent with you to prepare for this is just, it's been tremendous for me. You know, he has a very interesting background. He's a self-made person, as many are here in Villa Park, and I think that's what attracts many people here. He put himself through college by doing different types of work, including being the ice cream guy, selling ice cream from the back of a refrigerated pickup truck. He worked nights in the lab in a coal mine. Bob met his wife Barbara when they were freshmen at Westminster College. He majored in chemistry and earned an appointment as a graduate assistant at Penn State. Barbara and he married in 1957, when Bob was in his second year of his master's degree program, and Barbara taught in an elementary school in a town near State College. After graduation, they moved to New Jersey, where Bob worked for 12 years in the laboratories of Colgate Palmolive Company, where he and his team held 17 patents for laundry products. After that, in 1970, they moved to Michigan, where Bob became the Director of Research and Development for Amway Corporation, where he continues to develop not only laundry products, but other products in the consumer retail sector. I have to say, I'm a big user and have been, and a big fan of Amway soap products for many, many years. I've used them with my clothes, and I'm an avid believer in the product. In 1976, Bob and Barbara, along with Amway's Chairman of the Board and his wife, were at an event in Florida, dancing. Bob got a tap on the shoulder from the chairman, who said, "Come to my suite, I have something to talk to you about." It was that night that Bob was offered the CEO position of Nutrolite in Buena Park, here in California. The Hunters moved from Michigan to their new home on Carolyn Circle, enrolled their three children in Villa Park Schools, Karen, their eldest, and Rob. The middle child both graduated from Villa Park High. Kristen, the youngest, went through Sierra Villa in the years when the school continued through the ninth grade, and then on the 10th grade, to Villa Park High School. She could not finish at Villa Park because Bob, once again, was called to Michigan to assume the position of Executive Vice President of Amway Global in 1980. Four years later, the growth of Nutrolite business was so explosive, and Bob moved back to California to assist the son of Nutrolite's founder with that significant growth. In handling the challenges the growth requires, when they returned to California, the Hunters never considered living in any other city other than Villa Park, and bought their current home, which is down here on Laken Street. Nutrolite continued to grow so much that today it's Amway's number-one business. Bob retired in 1999. Bob sat on the foundation board for 12 years. One of the first projects was to raise funding for the all-well-known tower clock that we have in our outside of city hall that resides in Ralph's parking lot. At that time, the cost of the bill was between $12,000 and $13,000. They raised the monies through many generous donations given by those featured on the clock and the adjoining bench. He started as the foundation's treasurer and eventually became its president. In addition to Bob's service, Barbara has been a Women's League and Assistance League member since moving here, and has donated many hours to both organizations, including her support for foundation events. I asked Bob how he should be remembered, and he said, "He said others supported activities in our city and created opportunities for all of us to have fun." He also wanted me to know that, like most of all of us, he wanted to give back to a very special community we all call home. Over the course of his lifetime, he's spent countless hours serving on many nonprofit boards, giving him the opportunity to give back to the community. Bob has been a great friend to many of us in Villa Park, and tonight, we honor him and his service to the community.
Thank you.
Bob, congratulations, and we deeply appreciate your service to our community.
Thank you.
And if you would, I'd like a current president of the foundation to join me at the podium to present him with this plaque. All right. Bob, thank you so much for everything you've done for our city and continue to do.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We really appreciate you. And to extend that, I have a certificate of recognition from young Kim, who could not be here tonight, but wanted me to extend her appreciation and gratitude for all that you do for Villa Park.
Thank you.
And I also have two other folks that would like to come up and present.
Hi.
First of all, congratulations.
Thank you.
My name's Newton, and I work for a California State Assembly Member, Philip Chen, and I just wanted to say that our office is extremely honored to be presenting this certificate of recognition to you. This certificate just recognizes your countless hours of work, commitment, dedication, overall major contributions to the city of Villa Park. And I think Villa Park is very lucky to have you, sir. We're very honored to be serving you guys, and if there's anything we can do for you, just let us know.
Thank you.
My pleasure, sir.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I knew, I knew. On behalf of the Orange County Chairman, Supervisor Don Wagner, he is chairman this year, and I have to keep remembering to call him chairman, but because he didn't know that I knew you, but I know you, and of course, I had wonderful times with Barbara over the years in serving with you all, and I'm so proud of you to become the Distinguished Citizen, and much well-deserved. But I did not know that you were one of the five that started the Community Services Foundation, and I commend you for that, because what Villa Park does and continues to do for our community here, but throughout Orange and Orange County, is just magnificent, and we thank you very much for all of it. And there's a little certificate saying, "Thank you for everything you've done."
Thank you, thank you.
Can you bring down the council and get some pictures with you, sir?
Okay, can we? Wait, I can't. Okay, you do it your way.
There's no arms on the chair.
I know it, so it makes it much more challenging to get up. I get that.
I don't know if I can do it. I'm very stubborn.
That's how you keep moving, is to be stubborn. Well, when they let me come up there, I will.
You're on your phone, look at you.
Let me get a couple pictures here.
I can take pictures for everyone.
All right, here you go.
Any other phones?
Yep. I'm just taking one for the city.
Just right here. Perfect right here.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Would you mind taking a picture?
Yeah.
You're just gonna go and retake it?
Yep.
Well, what we did was carry a camera and whatever.
Oh, oh, sorry, I had mixed up. Oh, got you, got you. Oh, City Council's what I was gonna say. Sorry. It's a pleasure to meet you.
Yeah, make sure you get your correct one. You don't want the one where you just...
It's something I can remember that it did start with the foundation. The city manager at that time really was one of the real idea guys behind getting that together. Kind of fun at the beginning, trying to raise money for the community. But we get community, it's not so easy to get much out of it. We did get the clock going, and that was a good start.
Who was the city manager back then? Was it Fred or George or?
I can't remember his name. It was like 2000, and he was the guy that went, he went, he doubled his salary when he went up.
North, George Rodricks.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, thank you again, Bob. We appreciate you. Okay, we are moving on to our next presentation, which is the 2023 Fireworks Application Lottery. Steve, you want to say anything?
So this is the lottery that's prescribed in the city ordinances. Basically, we had four applications, the Rotary and the foundational automatically get a, I'm sorry, the Rotary and the Villa Park School PFSO automatically get a slot, and now anybody else who wanted to apply a nonprofit has the ability to. We had two, the football boosters and the band boosters submitted their traditional applications, so the process requires us to do a lottery pick to see which one controls. They both end up working together, but I think one of them usually takes the lead, and this is determination of who takes the lead. So with that, I'll defer to you.
So either the football team or the band is gonna hit me.
It's better you than us.
Red Iron Boosters Club.
Okay, football. We will be notifying them tomorrow morning. And then we return the check from the band boosters, so.
Okay, cool, thank you. Okay, AJ.
By the way, I took, I had a field trip to Nutro, Nutrolite? Is that what it was called? In Buena Park, because I grew up in Buena Park. And I remember being fascinated with that place as a child, because of all the moving parts and everything, so it was a really cool place. Small world.
I used to see it when my son built it in China. It absolutely took my breath away when I got one chance to see it in my life. Not only, I'm so proud of him, but proud of the company that could do that in a communist country.
You did good, sir. Proud Papa. Very cool. Again, a very, I don't say quiet, but it was a good month in Villa Park. Only 16,911 calls, most of those were not technically emergency, so again, we remind people, if it's not an emergency, emergency, crime in progress, please call the business line. Couple, only about 254 calls for service, only 84 of those were actually calls into our dispatch, all the other stuff was actually proactive activity by our deputies, which I, like I said last month, I completely consider a factor in keeping our crime stats really low. Couple minor traffic incidents, none of them related to speed, just distracted driving at intersections, a minor little fender bender in the parking lot over here, but nothing, no injury traffic accidents at all. I had a couple of parties that we had to break up, but no issues with that. And then, other than that, like I said, we're just encouraging people, I hate to beat the dead horse, but really keep your stuff locked up. We got statistics from FBI saying that 50% of burglaries are because stuff is unlocked, their cars are unlocked, their homes are unlocked. So we're just, we're gonna beat that drum until people start locking up their stuff. Lock their doors and their windows, check your locks and your stuff to make sure they're in working order. Sometimes they may look like it's locked, but, you know, it got rusty, or it's an old, you know, device, so double-check the working order. Don't leave your garage doors open if you're not out there, and even if sometimes you are, keep that thing closed, you know? Home security systems, if you don't have it already, well-lit, keep your, you know, put some outdoor lighting, try to discourage the opportunity as much as possible, so. Other than that, we have more guests.
We love having you come up here and give us a report every month. This is amazing.
You do better than me? No, someday. Any questions? Like I said, it was pretty...
We love your reports. Keep them coming.
I love giving them reports like this, so it's really good. We actually provided some educational material to Steve, that way he can post it on here, guys. Just really hit this home and make sure that we start, you know, locking stuff up, so.
Great. Counsel, comments, questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your service. Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and City Council. Thanks for the opportunity to be before you here tonight. Again, since our last meeting on April 25th, we had 64 units dispatched to 26 incidents within the city of Villa Park, so, and going with Captain Mattel over there, another kind of a slow month for us as well, which is great news. As far as the community education piece of the month, we start talking about fireworks safety, we just did the lottery for that. Certainly have plenty, plenty to say about fireworks safety as we head into the summer months, but next meet, next month's meeting is about a week before, so I'm gonna hold off on, on that, so it's a little bit more relevant about a week out. But if anybody needs any information on that earlier, certainly contact me, or you can go to ocfa.org for any of that safety information. I wanted to just take a minute, I know sometimes, most are aware of it, but just in case they're not, to go on record and make it available. At ocfa.org, under our education outreach programs, you can schedule fire station tours, school visits, community events, safety presentation, you can request a safety presentation, request for education materials, we do car seat installation training, and then as well, we've got some diversion programs as well. Mainly with that is that we call it Fire Friends, so if there was anybody in the community that, if we came across anybody that was starting fires, we would, juveniles, that is, we would work with law enforcement, enroll them in this program that we have, and that kind of dives, takes a little deeper dive into those programs. So you can sign up for that there, and then you can also sign up for Alert OC. So a lot of great stuff at the, at our website, ocfa.org, and just wanted to make sure the community was aware of all the, all of those resources that were available. With that, available for any questions that you might have.
Questions, comments?
Good.
Thank you, sir, for your service. Okay, at this time, we will review comments from members of the public to address any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. We will also review any public comments on the agenda items as well as they come up. Steve, is there anyone who wrote in, or is there someone present who'd like to speak?
Yes, we have Daven McMillan.
Hello, young man, how are you? Will you tell us your name and where you live?
Hello, my name is Daven, and I live in Orange Circle, Orange Grove Circle, in Villa Park.
Okay, great.
I am here, I'm a fifth grader at VP, and I'm here because we are selling discount cards to help fundraise for sixth-grade activities. They have different things like Rockwell's, Subway, and many others, discount cards to help fundraise.
So all the local businesses supported you and provided access to these cards?
Yes.
That's cool.
20 bucks, and there's also forms that you can fill out, and we could send them to your house.
Very cool, very cool. What's the call to action?
What?
What would you like us all to do?
Buy one.
Okay, well, you see that lady right there in the white sweater? You talk to her, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Steve, anyone else?
No.
Okay, no write-ins or anything? Okay. Now, we will move into our Agenda as Public Hearings. Our first hearing is to waive the reading in full of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. I will now open the hearing. Staff, please give the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the monthly item we have to waive reading of ordinances, et cetera, to allow us to run for an expeditious meeting, so we'd recommend approval.
Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this item?
No.
Okay, thank you. Council members, any discussion? I'll close the public hearing, is motion on the matter?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. Steve, would this vote, please?
Vote in your system. Passes by zero.
Our next hearing is the first reading of the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. I will now open this hearing. Staff, please give the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is the, as it says, the ordinance addresses accessory dwelling units. We last amended our Villa Park Municipal Code in 2018. Then last year, the state legislature adopted several new laws that require different things regarding our ADU, so in order to bring, in order to bring our code, Villa Park Municipal Code, into consistency with the state, we need to change and adopt that, and I'll let Justin and Ray are here to give you some clarification on that.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the city, of the city council. The subject of the ordinance concerns ADU zoning and development standards in the city of Villa Park. For some background, like Steve said, on why the ordinance is before you, since 2018, the state of California has passed a myriad of laws surrounding ADU development in the state, broadly aimed at increasing ADU production, providing affordable housing options, and reducing permitting time. In 2018, as Steve said, we did pass an ordinance concerning ADU policy, but the ordinance essentially defaulted to state law. The purpose of this ordinance is threefold. One, to codify into law ADU development standards, so residents can use our MuniCode online to review ADU zoning policy. Second, to replace our current ordinance in its entirety to come into compliance with state law. And third, to make small changes to the ADU development standards at the benefit of the community and goals set out by the state of California. I'd now like to just give a little bit of, some brief facts about ADUs in Villa Park. First, since the end of 2020, the planning department has reviewed and approved 31 detached ADUs, six attached ADUs, and four junior ADUs. They're by far the largest development type that the city sees. Second, based on conversations we have with property owners and also voluntary surveys that we send out to people who build ADUs in the park, or in Villa Park, we have found that most of the ADUs are being used for multi-generational housing options, such as for young college students, grandparents, or sons or daughters. And finally, we find that most of the ADUs are constructed in the larger E4 zone in the city. With that in mind, there's several things that the ordinance proposes to change. The biggest change is that currently two-story detached ADUs require a conditional use permit. I'll get that in a minute. This ordinance is proposing to remove the conditional use permit requirement for two-story detached ADUs to allow ministerial review. However, in removing that requirement, the planning department is proposing requiring a 10-foot side and rear yard setback for all two-story detached ADUs, as well as an additional parking space, which could be built either covered or uncovered on the lot. This contrasts with other ADU types, which only require a four-foot side and rear yard setback, and can utilize existing parking space as part of their one parking requirement, under certain, with certain exceptions to that. We're proposing that the two-story ADUs be allowed, detached ADUs be allowed to a height of 30 feet, which is the same height limit as single-family dwellings. The second major change being proposed is concerned with design standards. We're proposing objective design standards, which would be reviewed against the design of the main house and the character of the surrounding neighborhood. So I, for example, had somebody who wanted to build an AD like a caboose on a train, and under this, that would probably not be permitted. The third major change in this ordinance is concerned with size requirements. So in the current housing element, there is this section that is proposing that we allow ADUs up to 1,500 square feet on lots one acre or larger. We're proposing to allow that, so if you have a lot that is one acre larger, we're proposing you are allowed to construct a 1,500-square-foot ADU. Lots smaller than an acre, we are proposing to maintain the 1,200-square-foot size allowance, while J-ADUs would be 500 square feet. Please know that there are many aspects of the ADU policy that must conform to state law, which we cannot change, including, but not limited to, certain height restrictions, setbacks for one-story ADUs, and certain parking exemptions. And with that in mind, I'll conclude my presentation, and we do recommend that you review the ordinance and give us any comments or concerns, and then we'll move it to the next reading. Thank you.
I appreciate the matrix that you put together, because that was extremely helpful in understanding pre and post. I do have one question, and that is, with the smallest lots that we have in the city today, if I were to build multiple units on that, would I exceed, technically, would I exceed the coverage area of the lot, and would we approve that?
Yes, so for the lot coverage, that will still apply.
So that means the limitations require on lot coverage. So that will stay in place?
Yes. However, state law, and Todd can correct me on this, it does say that 800 square feet or lower, there are exemptions to lot coverage in Florida area ratio. So we had a case recently where somebody wanted to build an ADU, and it would exceed the lot coverage, but because it was under 800 square feet, there was an exception made for that.
Okay. All right, is there anyone here to speak on the hearing?
No.
No? Okay. Council members, you have comments, questions? Nothing? Okay. So I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion on this matter?
I'll move it.
Is there a second? Okay, move in second, let's vote, please.
That passes by a 5-0 vote, so the second reading will be our next regular, it's, I believe, the June 27th city council meeting would be the second, and if that were to pass by the council at that time, it would go into effect 30 days thereafter.
Now, we will consider our consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine, and are usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action list on the agenda. Any member of the city council, staff, or public, may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion in separate... from the consent calendar for discussion of separate action. Council members, are there any items from three through six that you would like to remove from the consent calendar?
Five, please.
Five? Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. Do I have a motion on number three, four, and six?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, move in second, we vote, please.
That passes by a five-zero vote.
Okay, number five. So number five is the Sixth Amendment to the Urban County Cooperation Agreement between the County of Orange and the City of Villa Park for fiscal years 24, 25, 25, 26, and 26 and 27. The city council approved the Sixth Amendment to the Cooperation Agreement from 24 to 25 through fiscal year 26, 27. So that's recommended that we approve it, so.
So my question really is directed at Steve, at staff, and I wanted to find out with this, I know it's about qualifying, the city qualifying for monies, and I was wondering if the city has ever qualified for monies for this?
No, the city is under a population of 50,000, so we're not entitled to receive the monies directly. They're sent to the county and they can be allocated to the city if there are specific projects, but those would have to be for specifically low and moderate income housing programs, which has never, there's been nothing eligible in Villa Park in the history of it. So we have not received a direct answer to you. And it is about 25,000. The interesting thing is, by giving it to the county, we've been negotiating with the county on north, on the homeless issues for both Placentia and Buena Park. We were able to leverage that and so all the cities that receive, that didn't receive it, we're getting credit because the county is giving that money directly to Placentia and Buena Park to help fund the homeless shelters. So basically, it's helping to leverage and would otherwise cost us more than the 7,000 to participate in those programs. So it is, we're leveraging it, although we're not receiving it.
Right, so thank you, I just wanted to bring that up so that the residents understood that, because some people are like, well, why do we keep applying, why do we keep? Because it's important, as you mentioned, we do pay into the North Spa and it does help us with that, so thank you. So I, that's it, I'll move the item.
Okay, move in our second?
Second.
Move in second, please vote.
Passes five zero.
Okay. The first item for new business is the approval of a five-year agreement for law enforcement services with the Orange County Sheriff Coroner. Staff, please give the report.
Thank you, Mayor, as you're aware, the county sheriff has provided law enforcement services to the city prior to incorporation 1962 and in thereafter. We've been, received recipients of very excellent service and we continue to do so. This is part of a five-year, the first of a five-year agreement. We approve five-year increments at a time, but each year, they provide us a new numeric dollar amount for that fiscal year. This, this year, the, there is a decrease in actual costs because health and retirement for deputies, the actual contributions have decreased a little bit. But it also does not reflect, it's a little bit deceptive because they're in negotiations with the deputy unions at this time. So we do expect that that number, like I mentioned in the budget hearings, will go up. And in order of magnitude, for every 1% increase they give to the deputies, we'll spend about $15,000 increase on our contract. That being said, we've other, we've also done something with discussions with the new captain. He and I sort of agreed that we should true up where our costs are actually coming in. So you'll see some variances, but the, it's reflective now in our budget and the contract of where actual costs are, as opposed to a historical number that was just left in there. So at this point, we've really trued up the contract. It didn't change the dollar amount on the bottom line. Again, like I said, it decreases to just on, just above, just under 2.1 million. And again, we strongly recommend, we get excellent services and very pleased to have the sheriff working with us. And I hope that we can continue a long, fruitful relationship with him.
Okay. Council members, any questions or comments?
I'll move the item. I'll move the item.
I'll second.
Make sure there's nobody.
Yep.
Is there anybody to speak?
No comments.
Okay. First and second, all right, let's vote.
Passes by a five-zero vote, thank the captain if he would express our.
Thank you, sir, for your service.
And for the sheriff's testimony on Capitol Hill last week, it was phenomenal.
Okay. Our next item of business is the cancellation of the July 25th, 2023 city council meeting. Staff, please give the staff report.
Thank you, as noted in the staff report, it was contacted over the last couple of weeks by, by the mayor and Councilwoman Jones, that basically they would be out of the area during the July 25th meeting. They both expressed a willingness and a desire to do a Zoom or electronic participation, which is still allowed under state law. So in, in doing that, I was going back, I went back through the records and we have very minimal, they're typically administrative, ministerial actions that are taken in July. There are requirements that they'd have to do to set up those meetings. In other words, we'd have to post notices of where the agenda, one of them, anyone on, on a cruise might be willing to speak, would have the ability to speak. And anyone in Hawaii that wants to leave the beach can certainly leave the beach and come speak at a meeting. However, it just, from a perspective of what's an expeditious and cost-effective use of our dollars, I just offer that and as a suggestion that the council consider this. It's up to the council, we defer to them, if they want to cancel the meeting. Typically, we've had at most five to seven, five to 11 items, and they are very ministerial in action. We do not foresee anything coming up. In the event that there are an emergency item, the county, the council still has the ability to call an emergency action within 24 hours by posting it. So we have the ability to call that with the mayor's discretion. So obviously, if there's something does come up, we can't anticipate that at this time, but there is nothing that we're anticipating. I was mentioning to several of you that we are actually well ahead of our schedule, meaning that we already have September contracts being approved, or ready to be approved in June. So we're moving well ahead. But again, this is just an offer of suggestion that the council consider. Many councils in Orange County actually go dark in July, but again, it's your call, so that's what I'd have to offer.
Council, any comments, questions?
Yeah, I, I have a comment, so, and I, I fully believe that both Councilwoman Jones and, and the mayor would definitely do everything they could to accommodate a meeting on, on vacation. My concern is, we don't know what we don't know, and what I mean by that is, who knows if, say, on Monday, there's a resident planning on coming to submit plans or, or request a variance or CUP or something, and if you do the timing right, you know, within the next week or so, it, it could fall that, it could be a June meeting, or sorry, a July meeting, that they would end up being on the, on the agenda. And I would hate to have to be part of, of delaying if that was to happen. Again, we don't know, but we don't know that nobody would be coming either. So I have concerns that us not being available because, you know, there was vacations planned, which is totally acceptable, totally get it, not, you know, that at all. But we had, you know, former mayor Zimmerman was in Antarctica and set up a, a meeting and was able to participate. So I kind of feel like we owe it to the residents to make sure we're available and that we hold the meeting. Also, that meeting falls right after 4th of July and historically, we usually get a lot of public comment, residents that want to come and voice their opinions about what happened or didn't happen, or if they're giving accolades to the sheriff for preventing stuff, and they won't be able to provide any public comment. So I would rather have us be accessible and not be needed than be needed and not be accessible, in my opinion.
Anyone else?
I'll, I'll speak to it, I believe it was 2019 that we floated this idea in the past and I was mayor at the time and I had, I had similar concerns as Councilwoman Miles is bringing up. The thing that I want to hear from staff, because I think there can be some savings here, there can be some reprieve given to staff and obviously savings for our coffers, so to speak, taxpayers' money. Do we have any planning items coming forward? Is there any, what kind of forecasting has been done on that? I know we're ahead of the game on many things, I just want to make sure that we don't have any significant controversial big-ticket items that are coming forward that might in any way, shape, or form be postponed or delayed by this.
We have no plans at this point that have been received by developers or any resident that would require or involve a, a July meeting. So keep in mind, we have a 30-day, if someone were to walk in Monday, let's just walk through a scenario. We have about a 30-day target that we try and hit for planning review. So if they walk in on Monday, whatever the Monday is from now, what are we, the 27th or whatever? It would be July, it would be somewhere, I'm sorry, some point late June, we would have it. Then we would subsequently, subsequently require a 15-day notice that we would have to have for any public hearing. So it is a very, like, like Councilwoman Miles, it's very tight. It would have to be within like the next week that they would walk in. And typically, if someone walks in with completed plans at this point, they would come in and say, hey, we got this coming, and they tell us and ask for advice or whatever. We have had nothing that would involve that sort of timeframe right now. Again, it's entirely possible somebody walks in with completed plans on Monday. I don't see that happening because typically they have, they come forward it, but it's entirely possible, like Councilwoman Miles mentions, I, I just, there's nothing on the radar. We've talked about this through staff and have seen and sort of inquired any, those people who are coming in, they're typically in process right now. So we know, we kind of have a feel for what's going on for the next several months and there's nothing.
Okay, thank you.
To, to Councilwoman Miles's point, we do want to be responsive to the public. And, you know, if necessary, we can call a special meeting to address whatever issue that may come up for that particular individual or that particular event or whatever it might be, whether it's a variance or CUP or whatever that we had to do, we could do a special meeting, couldn't we not?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
With 24-hour notice, posted at notice at the time, and so we would.
Well, I think we could address just about anything that came up during that period of time. If we did cancel the meeting and something came up, we could have a special meeting before we left or right after we came back or something like that, that would facilitate taking care of everyone.
That can happen 365 days of the year, you have that flexibility.
Okay. Okay, is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say that unfortunately, this trip was planned before I ever took office, so I apologize for that and I am, you know, very willing to, to zoom in if needed. But again, you know, we aren't here for show, you know, if there is truly no business that needs to happen during July and it's strictly ministerial, then, you know, maybe we do go dark for that time.
Well, and, and again, you know, I figured, you know, again, no, I'm not trying to say, you know, shouldn't, people shouldn't go on vacation, totally figured it was before you probably even decided to run, totally get that. My concern really is our accessibility to the public and we all signed up and, and the law affords us the ability to do Zoom or post meetings and it's been done in the past by other council people and I, I really feel it's setting a bad precedent. We're supposed to be accessible, even if it's that one person that wants to come in and voice their public, their opinion on something. I don't want to, I don't want to be responsible for them not being able to come because we decided there wasn't anything good to do or, you know what I mean? So I'm, I'm not in support of that, I, I, you know, I think we can, I think we can manage by having the Zoom and, and then it would be a really quick meeting, actually, if there's no, if there's nothing really going on. But at least that way, we're telling our residents that we are, we're here, we committed to a job and we're going to do the job, so.
We just have to make sure there's plenty of coffee on that ship because it's 2 o'clock in the morning for me.
What about Chad, when he was in Antarctica, it was like, so anyways, I, I'm not in support of this, but I, I respect everyone's, you know, your vacations.
Thank you. Anything? Okay. All right. Do I have a motion on this item? Motion to approve the cancellation of the meeting? Is that what you're doing? Okay, is there a second? I'll second it. Will you please vote?
That passes by a four-to-one vote.
Okay, thank you. Our next item of new business is the cancellation of the street slurry seal project list for our fiscal year 22, 23. Staff, will you please give the staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. You recall back last year that we adopted a schedule of slurry seal projects? And slurry seal, as you recall, is just sort of a layering of a tar on top of streets and repairing of known cracks or whatever to the extent, so it's a crack, seal, and repair. And then what we did, we went out to bid, on April 5th, we opened up the bids. All-American asphalt was 148,000, which is 50% higher than what we budgeted. So this is a true victim of the CPI where things are changing over time. We, we experienced that to the same degrees somewhat in our street pavement project, but we were able to move monies around to do that. Given that street sealing is not, is not a long-term type of solution for sealing the streets, it only, you buy about three to five years worth of, you know, additional longevity and it really only buys you time till you do a permanent two, two-inch grind down and repair. So staff and I were talking and I said, you know, why are we doing this? This is 50% again what we really want to do and it's not even that something. We've had people come in and object to even having slurry sealing done in the neighborhood and wanted a pavement. So my comment to them was, why don't we go ahead and, and discuss with the council the possibility of canceling this and moving that money into the street project, which seems to be a better way to deal with streets anyway. And I do, and they do anticipate that this, this is sort of a blip and I think you'll start seeing some of the costs drop as, you know, as it goes on. But anyway, so we had a number of streets and I don't have the specific, but there's one, two, three, four, six streets, I think, that are affected. Slurry seal, we've, there's a map unattached there and I don't recall exactly what the streets are. But anyway, we would recommend that we use this money in a more effective way. And again, it's 50% higher than we normally would have done on the street thing. We are budgeting money, again, and including money in next year's budget for this purpose with the idea that street slurry sealing, the cost will drop, we're hoping. But we have that option there to pursue again next year. So we would recommend that we cancel the slurry seal project, which would mean canceling the bids that were received on April 5th. With that, I'm available for any questions.
Go ahead.
Does this mean that those streets then will be bumped up the project list?
Yes, we'll, we'll basically move them into repair in, in repair mode as opposed to, you know, slurry seal, which I'm sure the residents will be grateful for because it's a longer-term solution for their streets.
Great, thank you.
What else? When I was at the SCAG event, I talked to some folks about alternatives to slurry and I did some research when I came back and at some point in time, I'd like to sit down and talk to you about maybe some potential alternatives, because there are alternatives that extend the life of the asphalt much further. It's kind of a weird process, it looks like you're putting a wrap around the, the street itself, but it's kind of cool, but I don't know how expensive that is compared to ripping up the old asphalt, putting it, putting it down, because I couldn't get a feel for how much that was, so.
Be happy to sit down at your convenience.
Yeah, take a look at it, okay. Any other, anyone from the outside write-in or any speakers?
No.
Okay. Is there, council, is there a motion on this matter?
I'll move it.
Second.
Mayor, if I could, and could the motion include a specific direction to reject all bids under the Public Contracts Code? Therefore, we can officially notify that we're not going forward with any of the bids. And I see a head nod of affirmation, so I will take that as a yes.
Let the motion reflect.
We, I think we assumed it had already been done, but that's okay. Right. So are we clear on that, do we need to talk about it again? Okay. Everybody vote? Oops, I mean.
Passes five zero.
Our next item of new business is the award of the sanitary sewer evaluation and model development project phase two. Staff, will you give the report, please?
Thank you, Mayor. This, you recall last year, in, we started an evaluation when SB 9 and SB 10 were passed. One of the things that comes up is the ability to require that any development that splits lots and develops has to, the infrastructure has to be there, specifically your, your sewer sanitary system. So what we decided to do was go out and actually do an assessment of our sewer system and say, where are we percentage-wise? We've completed our first phase of that project and now we did. completed our first phase of that project, and now we did, we did, submitted a phase two element, which finalizes that, and this will give us capacity flows. So now we know the status of all of ours, and now we know, you know, the next step will be to know the capacity, and this will also put it on a GIS system, so we'll be able to pull this up when somebody will come in and be much quicker. We went out and did a bid on it, and the phase two is $217,000. We did, NV5 was the bidder, and we'd recommend that we move forward in this. And again, this is, this is, I think, the last time the study was done to this level was in 2013. So it is timely, and to complete this is very useful for purposes of development. If in fact, people are developing ADUs and splitting the lots, et cetera, we want to make sure our sanitary system can support it. So I'd recommend approval.
Okay. Council members, do you have any questions or any comments? Anything from the public?
No, sir.
Okay. Do you have a motion on this matter?
So moved.
Moved in second. Please vote.
Passes by a 5-0 vote.
The next item of new business is the amendment to the housing element consultant agreement with Kim Lee Horn. Staff, please give the report.
Thank you. You recall, we are just finishing our sixth iteration, believe it or not, of the housing element that was for the state HCD. The sixth iteration means we are now, as of last Friday, we submitted our most recent response to their questions and requests for clarifications. The state has 60 days to, a state HCD has 60 days to respond, so we'll know in 60 days. And typically, they utilize the full 60 days in their review. During the course of that timeframe, in developing it, we had transitioned over from John Douglas, who was busy at the time, and used Kim Lee Horn. We are, had them finish the project at this point, the submission, and over the next 60 days, HCD typically will call down and ask a question about this or that or whatever. Kim Lee Horn would continue to represent us and respond to us. We are at a point where they said, Kim Lee Horn talked about submitting, we had a contract at the time, about $10,000 more to finish it than we originally anticipated, but we were all hoping that the fifth version would have been sufficient with HCD, however it wasn't. So we've had to continue it, and as we do that, there's a cost that goes along with it. So our, in our contract with John Douglas, we still had a total of 15,000 remained unspent from the initial amount. So I'm recommending that we utilize and transition that full 15,000, even though Kim Lee Horn has asked for 10,000, I want to have the available without having to come back for, you know, 5,000. But basically, it's allow us to finalize and hopefully finish our sixth element update with HCD for the housing element. So Kim Lee Horn is representing us, and they continue, we believe, to do a very good job and thorough, and we'd recommend approval.
Okay. Counsel, any questions, comments? Steve, I, I had, you know, John has done an amazing job for us over the years and has a great relationship with, you know, HCD and, and working with them. By us moving forward with Kim Lee Horn, is that?
No, there's a, the interesting thing about the housing element, there's, this is the step of approval of a plan. Then we will then have to do zoning changes or update our general, our general plan itself to come, to allow the housing element. So at that point, we'll transition back to John Douglas, who's indicated, but his workload was such that he didn't. But the other point is, John has said, based on frustrations he's got with HCD, he may in fact retire. So he may not even be available for the next element. And that's happened, we actually, as you recall, when we went out and found Kim Lee Horn in the first place, I contacted two others and said they just didn't want any more to do with it, so they weren't retiring as well. So the, the panel of consultants is dropping, but we are fortunate, Kim, Kim Lee Horn is willing to do it, and John's been available to discuss questions, why we have things here. We will transition back to John, and he knows with the zoning, to extent that he's willing to continue and unretire. But you're right that we don't, John's been very loyal to us and done a wonderful job at this point. Kim Lee Horn has the same type of relationship. They've had very successful negotiations or discussions or whatever you want to call it with HCD. So we're, we're not dropping the ball in quality in any way, shape or form with Kim Lee Horn.
Okay. Do we have anything from the public?
No, sir.
Okay.
I'll move it.
Second.
Move in second. Let's vote.
Passes by a 5-0 vote.
Our last item of new business is the authorization to purchase a 2023 Ford F350 work truck from National Auto Fleet Group. Steve, will you please give the report?
Thank you. You'll, you've seen Mike drive around there, and you've seen Mike drive his white pickup, the big one, and then he's, you've seen him drive the Ford 150 around lately, just the pickup, because the F350 has a transmission that's failed on us a number of times, and we're spending a lot of money on it. So what we started talking about was instead of let's just look and see what a new cost, a cost of a new vehicle would be. So we went out and fully loaded, it's $66,000. We're spending for a new transmission, as you can recall, anywhere from $10,000 up at times to do it, and he loses, we lose commission of that. Right now, Mike only goes about half the day with his truck before he has to come in and switch, swap out and go to another truck. So anyway, what we've, we're recommending is that we, we go ahead and buy a new Ford F350 work, fully equipped. One of the things I know you contacted me, Mayor, was about a lift gate. Mike specifically did not want one because that gets in the way of how he does his, you know, backs it up and moves it around, et cetera. So he specifically said he didn't want that. So he has it outfitted like he wants, but he appreciates obviously the concern we have for his delicate nature.
There are heavy things that he needs to pick up and.
I, I appreciate that, but Mike is Mike and, you know. But anyway, we're recommending, so this is, we've had, we went out and there's a fleet group, National Auto Fleet, which we'll get a discounted rate at, and, you know, you, so it's $66,000. We were received it in late 2023, early 2024. The trans, the transference of all our gas vehicles is not till 2035. The life expectancy of a vehicle is not going to be, you know, we're not going to have problems, it's going to be 10 years plus. So the vehicle will be 12 years old at times, so probably will need to be replaced again anyway if it was electric. So we're not, and electric vehicles are anywhere, utility vehicles are anywhere from 12 to 24 month delay in getting them at this point. So we're recommending that we go out and get an F250, or F, 350, I'm sorry, and replace it. The Ram 350, Mike doesn't, you know, he swears by it, and he will actually swear if you talk to him about it, because he's not happy with it anymore. But we would recommend that we do it and go ahead and do it, because I don't want to see Mike stranded in the road or having to use a wheelbarrow around the city to pick up stuff. So anyway, we would, we would strongly recommend that we move forward on this at this time.
Okay, and it's in the budget?
We will have it budgeted. So we are actually recommending you, we order it now, but we'll pay for it upon receipt. So it won't be received until the fall. So it will be, it is one of the items we've talked about in our budget workshop, so it will be included in the budget that you adopt in late June for next fiscal year. So upon receipt, we pay.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I don't know why this just popped in my mind, but it, it did, unfortunately, timing wise. I have one concern about going from F250 to F350, and I want Mike to have whatever he needs to do the job and certainly authorize a, a new vehicle. My only concern is Mesa and width of his truck, because candidly, they're wide, they're very wide, and our roadway is very, very narrow. And with the residents who are allowing their eucalyptus and xylosman or whatever hedges encroach more and more and more, creating an even more hazardous condition on Mesa, I just want to make sure that we've done the calculations in the width of the outfitted vehicle to potentially include a trash truck and/or two different similar sized vehicles, because from year to year, those widths do change, and it can be significant.
So right, right now, Mike has a Ram 3500.
Right.
So we would be going to a 350, which are roughly equivalent in sizes, very equivalent in size as it is fully loaded.
Okay.
So it would be no, no different, no significant difference in size.
Okay. I'm just saying, in, in that environment, inches count.
Sure. Yeah, exactly. So, yeah.
It is very, very dangerous and tight.
Right.
And I don't want to put Mike or the city in a position where we have an unfortunate incident, given the roadway width.
We have two vehicles. We have a 250 that is currently used by Miguel, and we have a 3500 Dodge, which is Mike, and that's much larger, like you say. So the, the 350 and fully loaded is in fact consistent with the 3500.
So the, we're just going from a Ram to a Ford.
Yes.
So similar. And what year is that Ram 3500, forgive me?
I want to say it's like 2016, 2015.
Okay. Yeah, I think there have been some width changes since then. So let's say before we sign on the dotted line, we just confirm that, that we don't have an appreciable difference between the two.
Sure.
Thank you.
Will do.
I, I misspoke when I said 250. It, it is obviously a 350. Thank you. That's all.
Just a question. I too want Mike to have whatever he needs, you know, but just a question. Why are, why, why do we need such a big truck, like a big, heavy duty in, in the city? And, and again, just, just a question, like what makes us choose the 350 instead of the 250?
I think it's capacity and what he puts in there. And if you notice, Mike carries in, and say, for instance, we have a wind episode, and we have the pine trees and the needles and things falling down. I really don't want Mike to spend a lot of time back. I mean, it allows him to get a lot more in the vehicle without having to do multiple trips. And also the branch sizes and things like that. We have a lot of fully grown trees that it does allow him to do it without having to get a chainsaw out there and hack things apart. So we're, we're fortunate enough that the 350 does allow him to do it. The other thing is the 350 and the 3500, we use that primarily up in the northern part of this town that has up and down. So if you're carrying heavy loads, you want to have a larger engine. You don't want to have the smaller, you know, 250, and you'll burn out the, you will burn out the transmission on up and down, you know, with weight on it, et cetera. So we use that with that particular thing in mind, is that, one, it allows Mike to carry more and have the things he does, needs to do in there supplied, so he doesn't have to make multiple trips. And two, that it has a large enough engine that it can handle the weight of the loads that we're carrying.
Thank you.
I just did some quick research here, and it looks like the Ford might be a touch narrower based upon the 2022 model. Please have staff just confirm that prior to the purchase, and they certainly have my support, as long as that is the case.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope, that was it. Thanks.
Nope. Okay. Anything from the public?
No, sir.
Okay. Have a motion for this?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
With the caveat that we look at the size.
Yeah, we'll confirm the sizes as requested by Mayor Protem Rosini.
Let's vote, please.
Passes 550 vote.
Okay. All right, Steve, it's your turn with your measure report.
Thank you, Mayor, and I would very pleased to announce again that we have submitted the HCD, the sixth update that went up to HCD last Friday. They have not acknowledged receipt yet, but that's not uncommon. We'll, you know, the 60 days typically starts when they say they've received it, so we're kind of play a little bit with time. But anyway, that's, we, the ball is sort of like in their court, if you will. So it, it is, a copy of that, if people are interested, is on our website, if people are, are interested. It's redlined, so it shows exactly what was changed from our last, and it's a lot of just technical changes that, you know, they ask for clarification, changes in verbiage, et cetera. Anyway, and then secondly, we are on schedule with our budget. Thank the council for spending the time to do two separate workshops. We are moving forward, and you will have a budget in hand, probably at least several weeks before the 27th, so that you'll have a chance to review it. Actually, it won't be in hand, it'll be online. We're trying to move away from, we're moving into a digital world as opposed to a hard copy world, but if anyone wants it, we'll have printed copies available. So we're, we're moving forward on that, and that's, a majority of our time is being spent getting all that documentation and, and et cetera ready. So anything else? We're just getting ready. Work will start on the street project. They'll start staging, I believe, the schools get out next week or week after. So you'll start seeing some staging happening. It won't be directly like the day after, all of a sudden you see streets shut down, but they'll see that happening. You will start seeing the, the vehicles out there, and they'll start, we'll be notifying residents affected, and we will also go door to door, let people know that their streets will be affected or whatever. The one thing that we will be doing when school gets out, we will be removing the, the parking, the, the, no, the parking restrictions will be reinstated, I guess you will say, on Santiago. And those were done when they were doing the work on the back entrance, and then also because of the Science Center, I mean, not the Science Center, the construction going at the high school. So we'll be going back to where there are restrictions, so I would caution people to make sure they look up at the signs when they do park on Santiago after school gets out, meaning, what is the, the date? I don't.
June 8th.
June 8th. So after, the following week thereafter, those restrictions will be in place, and the sheriff will be ticketing at that, begin at that point. So I just would caution residents to be aware.
Okay. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the SCAG trip report. This is for your information. I'm required to, to do a trip report. I attended the SCAG meeting down in Palm Springs, May 4th and 5th, so I had, I prepared one for you all's reading and so forth. If you have any questions, let me know. It was, it was a nice two days down there. They elected Art Brown, the new chairman or president. He's up in Buena Park. Matter of fact, I saw him at the city selection committee meeting the other night, so it's good to see him take leadership role there. But the, the usual things took place in a lot of housing, transportation discussions. I did not attend all of them. I did attend probably a half a dozen. They gave out awards to students who would come up with ideas that would, around transportation and things of that nature. And it was interesting to, to listen to some of their ideas. I questioned several of them because it, I didn't think they took it all the way through the process. I think they took it up to the point where, you know, it couldn't be completely implemented and so forth, some of their ideas, like building bike trails all the way from here down to Huntington Beach and things of that nature. So, but it was, it was, it was fun and enjoyable. So, but my trip report's in there. If you take a gander, and we'll file it for, for future reference. So. Next is the individual council member information items. Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control?
Thank you. So I had two meetings on May 18th. One was the Budget and Finance, the other was the General Meeting. The budget for the fiscal year 2324 was approved, and the budget was developed to have no significant increases in expenditures for next fiscal year. The 2324 revenues will cover all expenditures and allow the district to also continue contributing to district funds such as Facility Improvement Fund, retiree, medical, and retirement contingency for next year. Then we also, I think I had mentioned about the assessment districts. So benefit assessment, we have two benefit assessments on your property tax. One is, is District 1, and one is District 2, or Benefit Assessment 1 and Benefit Assessment 2. So we voted to increase Benefit Assessment District 2. Benefit Assessment 1 is the same as it has been for many years. It's staying at $1.92 per housing unit, but the Assessment 2 is increasing a quarter, 25 cents, from $8.30 to $8.55. And this is going to go to help, if you remember the sterile insect technique, and we got to increase capacity in, in the building along with some of the retirement medical benefits. We also had approval of a hiring manager for HR. It's, it kind of didn't go through the process that it should, and there was some issues with that. So they have now put in place a formal policy that any management position has to go through the district manager. It used to just be, it didn't used to work that way. So like I said, they found some, some issues, and so now that has been completely ironed out, and all positions will now go through the district manager. And then some outreach talking points. We are getting into, even though you wouldn't realize it now because it's been cloudy and kind of cold all day, but we are getting into that mosquito season. And I had a resident reach out to me Monday, Monday? What's today, Tuesday? Yesterday. And again, if anybody's having any issues with mosquitoes, please call the city. They can get in touch with me, or you can get in touch with me. And the inspectors are so responsive that they've already been out. And unfortunately, it's a home that has nobody occupying it right now, so the process is they have to go through a, a notice and then a warrant. And so hopefully, in, in 48 hours, that pool will be serviced. So that way, the mosquitoes that are currently breeding in it will no longer be there. But one of the things they wanted to say is this is midge season, and so. But one of the things they wanted to say is this is midge season and so midges kind of look like mosquitoes, but they're not. So you can still treat them, but it's not something that the vector control does. So they're getting a lot of calls about midges, but midges are not mosquitoes. So if you have any questions, you can call the district or me, but just remember tip, toss, take action and that's it.
Thank you. Orange County Sanitation District, I attended the, actually two meetings, the administrative committee meeting and also the board meeting. The board meeting was quite interesting. We, we gave out a 30-year recognition for one of the plant operators there, Tony Bracino. And he had some really fun stories to tell us about his, his years of service there. And I didn't know, I didn't know this, but there's actually a wastewater 101 citizens academy and they had the graduation. And they, they graduated eight people, two of which are Villa Park residents. So, and I'm going to not do this justice, but Yatri and Pradeep Shakula were the two from Villa Park. And they actually asked me to stand up there with them when they got their pictures taken. So it was kind of cool. It was fun to see them get recognition. We approved 11 plant operation upgrades, various incentive things that go on with the plant to upgrade the hardware and some of the software that's going on there. And lastly, we were given the, the last produced strategic plan, which was done in, in 2022. These strategic plans are typically five years because their projects typically are, are very long in nature. And so they plan them five to 10 years out. So we were each given a copy of the strategic plan to review it. And between now and September, come back to them with any recommendations, thoughts or concerns or questions or whatever that we might have or suggestions about what to do differently. I can't imagine me telling them what to do because those are amazing people. But I do have some questions and I'm happy to also float the strategic plan by each and every one of you if you want to provide me with input to take back to them and, and look at it. So that's my report. Fire Authority.
Thank you, Mayor. On May 10th, I attended the budget and finance meeting of the Orange County Fire Authority. And the principal topic was the, the budget. We will be voting on that and hearing a presentation that was approved and forwarded from the committee to the executive and board, regular board tomorrow night. But some of the highlights are for fiscal year 2023, 2024 proposed budget results and increases to cash contract cities, which we are not. We're what's called a structural fire fund city. Base service charges from, ranging from 3.99% to 4.48%. Total increases for cash contract cities vary based on selected cities impacted by the fourth position phasing costs. These cities include Buena Park, San Clemente, Tustin, and a few others. So overall, what I can say in general terms is that we're in a very, very healthy position as a fire authority, both with our unfunded liabilities as well as looking forward to fulfilling some long-term needs as far as our CIP budget needs. So we're in good shape and I will report back when everything is finalized. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Orange County Library Advisory Board. The executive committee met last month around the same time as our, I think I reported on it last month. This month, our, our meeting is actually Thursday and the full board will review the budget with librarian and hopefully approve the, the budget for next year. Orange County Unified School District City Schools Committee.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. So we met on Monday, May 15th at Orange High School in their new science building. And we had a presentation from First Five Orange County on the Engage Neighborhoods Program, which looks to connect schools and school districts, early care and education, parents and families, businesses, nonprofits, and city leadership. So it's a comprehensive program aimed at increasing long-term outcome goals for children ages zero to five in Orange County. So this project ensures that neighborhoods have the infrastructure and programs to support these children. So I am looking into what resources they may have to provide to our city. However, I did find out that their program is in declining funding due to an interesting byproduct of recent legislation. As you recall, we passed Proposition 31, which banned the sale of flavored tobacco products. And I guess that's the source of the majority of First Five's budget. So they are anticipating a $7 million drop in their budget this year. So it's, it's one of those things, you know, although we don't, you know, want, you know, particularly our children, you know, smoking flavored tobacco, which, you know, I personally feel is where those flavored products are aiming at, is our kids. You know, we probably for the future should be careful when attaching funding to something that we want to get rid of. So, so that is going to be a little bit of an issue for that First Five program. So we continued our discussion from last month's meeting on the crossing guards. The City of Orange through the Orange Police Department has still not filled any of those 17 crossing guard vacancies that I mentioned last time. They will be flying these jobs again for the 2324 school year and they're hoping to have better success in filling those positions than they did last year. Traditionally, this City Schools Committee has been limited to Orange, Villa Park, and Anaheim, but we are going to be extending invitations to Santa Ana and Garden Grove as well, since Orange Unified Schools cover those two cities. And then in general, school news, the work has been completed next to the Villa Park High School field. So the back entrance is back open and has been for the last couple of weeks. Hopefully everyone has noticed that the traffic on Taft has gotten a little bit better anyway. And as we stated before, the last day of school for Orange Unified is Thursday, June 8th. And Villa Park High School's graduation ceremony will be held that day at Fred Kelly Stadium at 7:00 PM. And Councilwoman Miles the Sun is going to be graduating this year. He is a senior. So congratulations. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Law enforcement?
No meeting.
No meeting. Villa Park Community Services Foundation?
The foundation is planning to have the usual Fourth of July parade. And they are still trying to make the concert in the park happen as long as OUSD will allow the facility usage. Outside of that, it's just chucking along. Thank you.
Cool. Thank you. Housing Legislative?
No meeting.
No meeting. Bridges at Kramer?
No meeting.
Senior Citizens?
There was a meeting. There was a meeting on May 12th. And I don't know if you guys remember, but I, I did, there was the Pep For You, which was a Parkinson's exercise program that was online. So we had some new members. So we kind of went over that again and, and I can forward the link to the city to put on our website. But this is a great, doesn't cost anybody anything and you can do the online program or else they have specific facilities. And I mentioned to the city manager that perhaps we could offer this facility for the Pep For You program and it would be open to seniors and it, they, the costs are covered by grants. So the seniors that want to sign up and do these Parkinson exercises. And it's also for caregivers. So it's not just if the individual has Parkinson's. It's also for their caregivers to do it too. So we're kind of trying, just the baby steps of getting that started and seeing about the interest there. And then there's Orange County Senior Day, which is put on, put on by Alzheimer's Orange County and Memory Support Services. And it's like age in place, age with grace. And right now it's being held down in South County. But it's Friday, June 16th from 8:30 to 12 noon. And it's, the, the program highlights are Dr. Trin. He's a primary care and stroke prevention at Memorial Care. There's experts on memory care and Alzheimer's, free blood pressure screenings, self-defense tools for our seniors to stay safe, fraud and scam prevention tips, which is really important because as we know, you know, seniors unfortunately are targets and easily unfortunately succumb to that because they're so trusting. Cell phone training, insurance and travel opportunities. And then Assembly Member Lori Davies and Diane Dixon and Kate Sanchez will be there as this event is put on by these assembly members. So I'll forward this to the city manager to put on our website. But it's a, it's a great opportunity to come down and, and get some resources, especially if you or someone you know or love is starting to go down the path of, of the degenerative diseases like Alzheimer's or Parkinson's.
So it's a challenge these days and times, I tell you. More and more people seeing it every day.
Well, and you know, this is the largest population growth is, is our seniors.
Yep.
So, and it's not going anywhere. So it's going to keep going.
So since you're on a roll, do you want to, do you have individual items that you'd like?
Well, actually, so I, I went to, there was a town hall, and I have to get his name, down in Mission Viejo. And it was a fentanyl town hall and I was invited to that by Supervisor Wagner. It was fantastic. And Sergeant Gonsoli, I'm probably not saying that right. Guns, gun, how do you put? Gonsoli. All right, sorry. The accent was in the wrong place. He is, he is the education sheriff that does, that goes and does these town halls. And so it was quite informative, not just from the point of view of we all know about fentanyl and, and, you know, how bad it is. But he was able to give great presentations also on, on the pills. And we talked a lot about how some of our seniors and other people are buying pills online and they look the same or whatever. So he kind of brought that awareness. But the best part of this was, is after he gave his presentation, you sat there for another 10 minutes and had a very interactive presentation by two members who gave training on naloxone or Narcan and how to use it. And then you left that town hall with two doses, one for each nostril of Narcan. And you had the training to use it. And so you might think like, well, I would never need it. But one of the things people don't realize is that sometimes kids, like when I came home and I, you know, had it on the counter and, and you have also, they give you another little handout that also kind of goes over how to use the, the Narcan. And I have two boys, you know, and, and knock on with, they're good boys. But there is an anxiety by some of our students, our, our teens of, not that they're going to use it, but that they're going to be in a situation where it's a contact use because there's somebody that they may know that is using it. And then all of a sudden, you know, they shake hands or high five or whatever, and then they touch because it's, can be so deadly. So they actually were really comforted knowing that I had this in the house. And it was really an odd moment for me because it's not something you really talk about. And so it opened up conversations. So that was a good thing. And then I spoke with the city manager and then also with Supervisor Wagner, Chairman Wagner, and then with Madison Minor, who's OUSD trustee, and with Principal Mc Houston and with Sergeant Gonsoli, who just got back from DC. And we're going to plan in the late fall, a town hall and interact all these, you know, the OUSD board, sheriff, city, and Wagner's office to do a town hall at the high school. So in the late fall. So we're going to look forward to that. And being able to send everybody home with that Narcan is amazing. I think Pat had so much fun to say.
I don't know which of you are going on vacation in July, but July 20th, we are going to have a fentanyl. I was going to invite all the council members and city manager and it will be, Chairman Wagner is sponsoring it. It'll be at Santiago Canyon College, which should be convenient for almost everybody in District 3 that covers, you know, Anaheim Hills and Orange and Villa Park.
It's not that far.
No, it's not.
It's not that far.
It's not. And I just wanted you to know, in fact, I was just out there today to see the room that we're going to have it in and where we'll have the tables for people to come in because there's new organizations on the fentanyl issue. And so we want to give everybody a forum in which they can answer questions. And quite truthfully, it's not me that's doing this. This is our wonderful Orange County Healthcare Agency that pulls this all together, pulls it from these two gentlemen, Bailey Wicks and, and, but we'll probably also invite Orange PD and Orange FD because they also service much of that area. And anyway, I just wanted you to know, it can happen sooner. And I hadn't heard about one in the fall, but I'm sure I'll be the one coordinating that for Dawn too. Thank you.
Thank, thank you for doing that. There we go.
I just want to say congratulations to all the seniors and, you know, and everyone finishing their school and hope everyone has great, great summer off. That's it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Jones?
Sure. I coincidentally also attended a presentation on fentanyl put on by 4th District PTA, which is the largest PTA organization in the entire state of California and larger actually than some state, entire states PTA groups. This was given from a parent perspective, but it sounds like it really tied in with a lot of the same information you received because one thing that they really hit hard was people purchasing drugs online. And they really think that, you know, whether it's teens or seniors, they think if they're running, you know, out of a prescription or if they're trying to get a hold of a prescription illegally, that buying the pills online, they're getting that same drug and they're just not. And, and so that was, that really seemed to hit home with the audience. And one of the mothers who spoke, she lost her 14-year-old son because it was, you know, a friend of his stealing grandma's pills, but then the very first pill he ordered online, it was fentanyl and he passed away. So yeah, no, these, these programs are so valuable to get out to the public. So I'm so happy to hear that Chairman Wagner's doing more of those. So fantastic. Thank you also to Assemblyman Philip Chen's office for arranging a presentation and walkthrough of the ironworkers' training facility in La Palma. We walked through that myself and Councilman Wu. And it was so interesting to see all the training it takes to become an ironworker and, you know, a tradesman or tradeswoman and how much pride they have in their work and all the different projects that they've completed. And I mean, it really is incredible, the whole training facility they have back there. They have like a, like a mini like gridiron obstacle course almost back there that they're, they're welding on, they're scaling it. It, it was really an incredible program to see in person. So thank you to Assemblyman Chen's office for that. So. And that's my report. Thank you.
Okay. May I approach him?
I just want to wish all the seniors best, best wishes and congratulations. But their journey's just begun. They've, they've got to keep that foot down and, and get that AA, get that BS or BA, get that trade and keep, keep working hard. I'm proud of each and every one of them.
Cool. Councilman Wu?
As Councilwoman Jones mentioned, attending the ironworkers' work facility is really fantastic to walk, to see. One thing I did not know is how much math those guys are learning. They have, on the board, it shows calculus equation. That was amazing. Outside of that, I also have attended Dr. Eisenbach's 100th birthday in Yobalinda. That was phenomenal to, to, to be there with him. He had been, he lived in our city for 50, I think 50 years. And he had participated our Hanukkah for the last two years. And I, one thing I learned in the Jewish community, they really promote and celebrate 120th birthday. So hopefully he will continue to attend our Hanukkah in the city. So happy birthday to Dr. Eisenbach. And also I forgot to mention, thanks to Assembly Philip Chen's office to set that up. Really enjoyed that. Thank you.
Thank you for attending on behalf of the city too as well. The last thing that I wanted to bring up is I did attend the Orange County City Selection Committee meeting this past week on behalf of the city. There were three things that we could vote on. One is committee chair and assistant chair. Our friend, we all know, Dave Schauer, he just continues. He just, he doesn't know how to step down. I mean, he's just, he's an amazing guy. But he's, he's going to continue as committee chair. And then Patrick Harper will continue being the assistant chair. The other vote that I could vote for was the last co-rep. I think I told you all last time, we went through four, four different votings. This time was very simple. One of the, one of the members didn't show up. So therefore I think that the majority went to Bruce Whitaker and he accepted the. to Bruce Whitaker, and he accepted the position. And the last thing, I didn't, I didn't, I voted on it, I wanted to nominate our city manager, but I backed off because I didn't have a chance to talk to him about it. But Tom Costello was appointed city manager rep for Orange County Operational Board, so, in that meeting as well, so. That's it. Congrat, what did I forget? Friday? Oh, Friday, yes. There is a UC, UC, how do you say, UC Fullerton? Cal State Fullerton, thank you. There's a graduation this Thursday, Fred Facinelli Jr., or the third, is actually graduating with high honors and a BS degree, so congratulations to him for what he's doing and going through, he's amazing, he's an amazing kid. I mean, he's smart as a whip, and he, he does these things with these 3D printers that are absolutely amazing. So looking forward to his graduation ceremony, so. With that, I will adjourn the meeting. Our next city council meeting is June 27th at 6:30 PM. Thank you.